And you have a quorum.
Next item.
Item forty-six is the Marietta Gardens Circle K Convenience Store Service Station and Car Wash. It's a request for a use permit, special development permit, and design review for an automobile service station, convenience store, restaurant with drive-through, and car wash for a property located at 7225 Marietta Drive in the Kasumnas community. The environmental document is an addendum to prior final supplemental environmental impact report. And also, this item does require an oath.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Muffet.
Yes, do you want to ... so I do have a brief PowerPoint on this item. As the clerk indicated, it's the Marietta Gardens Circle K Convenience Store Service Station and Car Wash. It is located in the Rancher Marietta area of the Kasumnas community at 7225 Marietta Drive, approximately 1,000 feet east of the Marietta Drive-Jackson Road interchange, and it is in an area that's been planned for commercial as part of the previous Marietta Gardens project. The application before you today is for a use permit for the service station in the commercial zone, extended convenience store hours from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., for the roof canopy structure to be close to five feet, and that's the top of the roof, above the clearance level. A drive-through window within 300 feet of residential, a special development permit related to landscape screening, reduction in landscape between the drive-through lane and public right-of-way, increase in service station signage, and an increase in the number of directory signs and design review. This graphic is the site plan. They are not taking access directly off of Jackson Highway, but basically you would come down Oakville Lane and access the project from Marietta Drive. The next graphic is the landscape plan, which is also always a little bit easier of a graphic to be able to see what's going on at the project site with the service station and the car wash. These are the elevations, and has been considered by staff in the Design Review Advisory Committee to be of good quality design. There's also proposed signage shown on this graphic for the area.
$2.39 for gas, pretty good price.
I don't know if the price is a ...
You go get all you can today.
We're not putting the price in these ...
I know, but it's showing right there.
Some of the key points are that the proposed drive-through shares a building with the proposed convenience store. It will have amplified noise, and the noise source is less than 300 feet away, but it is across the busy Jackson Highway area. And there was an environmental coordinator addendum that determined that the prior negative declaration for the other project was adequate and appropriate. So the recommendations before you are from the Design Review Advisory Committee recommending the project be found in compliance with the design guidelines. The Kasumnas Community Planning Advisory Council has an advisory recommendation for approval of 5-0, staff recommendation for approval, and a planning commission recommendation for approval. And then the final slide is the recommended actions that are in your board report. So we do have an applicant representative here, and that concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you very much. And would ... could you show a hand for who's here to speak on this item? Okay, then if you can ... those that intend to speak, you'll need to be sworn by our clerk. If you could stand and raise your right hand, she'll take care of that.
Do you swear to tell the truth and the whole truth that the testimony about that you're about to give this board is the truth, so help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm? And when you get to the podium, please state for the record the statement, "I have been sworn," and state your name.
Thank you very much. I don't have any cards, so if the applicant would come forward.
John Sullivan, on behalf of the developer, this is the project builder.
If you could speak one at a time, so you can speak in between the two microphones, that's how we can hear you. One at a time, there we go, in between the microphones. There we go, thank you.
We just want to add that the project has met Design Review, CPAC, Planning Commission, all unanimous. And there is a big mowing strip that we added, or a landscape strip we added between the Caltrans right-of-way and the wall, which doesn't ... it shows additional 20 feet of landscaping of wildflowers along the highway.
Okay. Are there any questions of the board? I don't have any comment slips. Ms. Frost.
I don't have any questions. It looks like you were very flexible and did some good work in making this, in addressing everybody's concerns, and I can move approval if the board doesn't have further questions.
I'd second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, right now I'm going to take, I have ... are you ready, George? I have an off-agenda speaker, and we're a little bit ahead, so I will take that now. George Azar, Bill Davis, and Greg Vaughn. Greg Vaughn, Jr. Welcome.
Thank you for allowing us to come in front of you today. I'm Bill Davis. I happen to be a former retired county employee.
Good to see you. Yeah, I recognize you. Good to see you.
I worked at the Department of Child Sports Services. We're here today to let you know we've started a new business in the Natomas community, Davis Sports Academy. We're a baseball, softball training facility. We're having our grand opening on October 19th. And Mr. Serna, we'd like to invite you and the whole board, but specifically, we're in your district, and would love to see you out there. We have, if I could ... you have the whole packet, right? If I could give these to the clerk, I've got copies of a press release and a flyer that we did, and I'll give them to the clerk. There's a set for each of you here.
Great.
I just want to introduce myself. I'm George Azar, good friend of Mr. Serna there.
High school buddy.
And welcome, everybody, if you're able to come out. I'd like you to come out and see what we're going to do with these kids and build up our baseball community out there in the Natomas. Coming from 21 years of running a taco truck, jumping into the baseball scene, it's like, "What are you doing?" But I think it's a great thing. Been running the league out in South Natomas for the last almost three years now, and I'm excited to move on to this new adventure. This is one of our young trainers here, Greg Vaughn, Jr.
Yeah, just like George said, I'm one of the instructors, and our grand opening is October 19th. We'd love for all you guys to come out and just support our business.
Right on. Great.
Well, Greg's pretty famous his own right, too, I think. Few years in the majors, if I remember.
That's my dad.
That's his dad. Otherwise, he looks really good.
Working out there at Davis's gym, I forget, keeps him in good shape, looking good, so. Anyway, congratulations on the guys.
We've got, I've got a pretty extensive baseball background. While I worked for the county, I did baseball training and ran club teams on my own time. Once I retired, I got to come to my passion. So when you look at the flyers, there's some names there. All of those are personal friends of mine. One of them is my brother, who's agreed to come up and appear for us and help make this a quality event. So we're going to have games for the kids, we'll have food there. We want, it's a family event. That's the way we want to present it, and that's how we're going to run it. We'd love to see you there.
When you say food, do you tacos?
Might be. I think so.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for being here. Appreciate it. Anything you're doing. Okay, I'm going to take one more off-agenda speaker. We have one more card, and that's Amar Shergill.
Hi, thank you, supervisors, for taking time. I wanted to speak to you regarding the EEOAC, which is the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee. Thank you for allowing me to serve on that committee for over a year now. But we haven't been able to achieve quorum this year, although we've been meeting a number of times in smaller numbers. And we have a report which we drafted at the end of last year. We couldn't get quorum to actually vote and submit it. So I've come before you today, and I'll leave copies of this, and hopefully we can have the supervisors look at it. But there's nothing particularly controversial at the EEOAC committee. We review the workforce statistics and try to make some suggestions or remark when it seems that diversity goals are not being met. So with regard to this report, if we look at the Sheriff's Department, for instance, the Sheriff's Department has done a fantastic job doing outreach. They have certainly gone beyond their duty and what you might think is reasonable to try to get diverse applicants to apply. But despite all of those efforts, we have noted that the total number of African-American employees has decreased in recent years, and the percentage of African-American employees in the Sheriff's Department has decreased. In 2017, less than 7% of employees and new hires were African-American, while we know that the workforce composition in Sacramento is certainly higher. So they have some challenges. And I think with regards to the Sheriff's Department and a number of other departments we've looked at, the challenge is not that they're failing to work in good faith on these issues, is that there isn't tracking. So they, if they go out to a number of events, they can't track the results from those events all the way through the application process and into hiring. So they don't actually know, and this is true in a number of departments, they don't actually know what's working. So I'd like to ask the county to maybe provide some resources for, not just Sheriff's Department, but for all departments, to determine where they should be spending more time, what actually gets more women to apply, what gets more diverse applicants to apply. You know, for instance, on this one-page report, at the airport, we have women employed at 28%, and it's been like that for over five years, and they really don't have a good way of figuring out why that's the case. So they need help. The Agricultural Commission, they had five employees hired in 2017, only one was a minority. They have no African-Americans out of a total employee workforce of 25 people. The County Council Department, who we know are trying hard to hire diverse employees, they have 80% women, but new hires are 50% minority, but hardly any minority men are in that office. So I could go on about some other issues, but I just wanted to bring this to your attention because there's really no good way other than public comment, because we just can't achieve quorum in our committee. So thank you very much. And to whom shall I give this document so that you can review it?
Yes, Mr. Serna.
Thank you. Well, I know this is an item that's not on the agenda, so we cannot formally consider it or act on it per the Brown Act. First of all, I appreciate you taking the time to be here. It kind of begs the question, is there a structural problem in terms of not being able to have a quorum? That kind of troubles me. So yeah, please come back to the podium if you would.
So it's my understanding that we have a couple of missing assignments yet, that people haven't been appointed. I know that the application processes are out there, so maybe we just have difficulty getting people in. But also, perhaps, we just need to lower the quorum requirement so that we can just achieve quorum with a lower number of people.
Okay. Well, I appreciate letting us know that. I'm looking to our county executive to diagnose what has been, not just substantively what's been presented, because I think that's very important, some of the concerns and focus that's been expressed here about room for improvement, that's pretty clear in different departments. But maybe we ought to explore what we can do to enhance participation. It always concerns me when we have a county-sponsored body that is unable to find quorum thresholds, and when they feel that they need to have some representative during public comment on items not in the agenda, that should be a red flag for all of us. So I'd like to make sure that we don't lose sight of those two things. So again, thank you for being here. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I should make clear, the report is draft, has not been voted upon, but I don't think there's anything controversial in there that we wouldn't approve.
You were very clear in the way it was on the headline, so we know that, and appreciate the delivery of the report, Amar. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all the cards I have for off-agenda. I'm going to go out of order here, clerk, if you don't mind, since we have a large number of people that want to speak on one particular item, and number 48, probably a lot fewer people, and therefore, let's be more efficient. So we will move to item number 48 before we hear 47.
Okay, item 48, approve the 2019 Neighborhood Traffic Management Program traffic plans. Let me give them a second to readjust the PowerPoints.
That's a PowerPoint, yes. Excuse me. Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. My name is Lou Lee.
I'm sorry, before you start, is there anyone here to speak on item 48?
Yes.
Okay, one, two.
I have three cards.
Okay, all right, sorry. Thank you.
So my name is Lou Lee from the Department of Transportation. Today, I'm here to request the board to consider the approval of four traffic plans. I do have a quick PowerPoint that I want to go through and discuss these four plans. So a quick background, beginning of the year, the board approved the funding for 39 projects in the 2019 NTMP projects to address speeding concerns on residential streets. So after the approval, staff proceed with the traffic plan design and start surveying the neighborhood to get the bill consensus for these 39 projects. So a quick go-through, we do this every time, the guidelines for the NTMP approval and what a support rate means. So generally, the support rate, one is less than 65%, doesn't, basically, not qualify for further consideration. And if the support rate is between 66% to 74%, requires a board hearing, and most of these, three out of four plans we'll bring to the board today, is fall within this category, where 66% and 74% range. And the project with support rate greater than 75% can go forward with construction without further action from the board, unless a request for the board hearing is filed with the department. So one of the four projects today falls into that category. So the 2019 NTMP projects had 39 projects. Thirty-four of the projects have greater than 75 support rate across the county. So three projects is between the 65% and 74% support rate, and two projects less than 65. So within that, 34 projects, this one project had asked the Department of Transportation to be presented to the board for presentation to consider the final traffic plan. So I'm going to get into a little bit more detail about these four traffic plans here. The first three traffic plan is fall within the range of 65% and 74%. Illinois Avenue is the first one. This is located just on the west side of Hazel Avenue, south of Sunset. We do have a mixture of support and also opposition from the street, ranging from resident doesn't think the speed table needed at all on the street, and then you have folks on the street wanting more. Initially, the traffic plan was proposed, having three-speed table kind of space throughout the segment, and then because the comment from the residents and adjacent residents, we had made adjustment. So the final plan only included two-speed table, which kind of also, having some resident live on the street thinking the third one should be kept its original location, but the final plan is included with two-speed tables. Maraga Drive is another one that we initially proposed a two-speed table. This is near dewy and winding way area, so it does a mixture of existing always-stop sign already on the street, the speed table just adding more to getting people to slow down. So because of lack of support on one end of the street, so the final plan included one-speed table mixing with a lot of existing always-stop signs on the street. Blue Oak Drive is in, it's the third one here on the table. It's the, it's in the Orange Vale area. It's a windy, hilly street, so there's a lot of residential with cul-de-sac sets deeper into the street, and then you have some always-stop along the street as well. So the plan proposed for two-speed table because the comments throughout the outreach process we received from the residents, so we had to make adjustment along the way to shift the location. At the end, we had final two-location. Just this morning, I learned that a resident adjacent to the speed table had contacted our office and was hesitating in supporting this table in front of his or her house there. So we'll continue to work with that resident to reach, if we need to make minor adjustment, we certainly will do that as well. So the last, the fourth plan on the board here is the Kingbird Way. This is the neighborhood near Don Julio and Elcorn Avenue, in that, just south of that intersection in that neighborhood. So we have proposed a total of four speed bumps initially, due to lack of support and adjacent resident at times making comments do not support the speed bump in front of their house. So we have ...
Wait, you said lack of support. Doesn't it say support rate is 76%?
Overall, we have the 76% support, but specifically for one speed bump in front of a group of house there, the resident opposed to it.
Just want to be clear on that.
Yes, just one speed.
Contradictory information.
Yes, just one speed bump. So staff attempt to make some change, to look for another alternate location. However, with the new location, we're still getting opposition from the adjacent residents. So the final plan is ending up with three-speed bumps on the street. So generally, the four plans in front of the board here, we all make, staff had made greater effort to make adjustment, work with the resident to seek a degree of compromises for these plans. They're definitely not the perfect plan, but we believe this definitely is definitely a good step moving forward to getting traffic calming and speed reduction on the street. So with that, I'd like to move to the final slide, and staff recommend the board approve the four traffic plans and direct the staff to proceed with the implementation. I conclude my presentation, and available for questions.
Any questions from the board?
Hear from our speakers?
Is there any questions of staff, the board?
Not on the four plans, but just in general, did you want to hear speakers first? I just have a ...
Yes.
If you'd like, yes. So we're going to hear from the speakers if there's any questions specifically at this time. Jeff Lanzaro? Jeff Lanzaro?
Jeff Lanzaro, are you here?
Hugh Brady? Mr. Brady?
There he is.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Hugh Brady. I live on the corner of Creekwood and Illinois Avenues. And I am urging you today to deny the speed bumps. Speed tables sounds better, but it's still speed bumps. Speed bumps belong in shopping centers. I think you should know additional information about the one, the speed proposal for Illinois Avenue. In the one case, the county had to go back for a second vote in order to get sufficient numbers to qualify for these categories they're in. The second vote was the one where all of a sudden, the speed bump just south of Rancho Court disappeared. And in the disappearance of that speed bump, it stops all advantage of having speed bumps on that street. Number one, we don't know when the request was made. As you were told, the Illinois Avenue is one street off of Winding Way. If the request was made before the work on Hazel Avenue was complete, then it may no longer even be valid. Because we believe, many, many of the residents believe that a lot of traffic was diverted from Hazel Avenue onto Illinois Avenue during that construction period, which is now finally over. Finally, I say, because that project dragged on forever.
Can you wrap up, sir?
As I say, we don't know when the request was made, if it is still valid. I wonder why we are penalizing 35 mile-an-hour speed limit on the street, and we are penalizing these, all the people are running legally with speed bumps.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we have DOT comment on his questions, please?
If you'd like.
Thank you. When did the application come in?
I don't have the specific date, but it was during the 2017 timeframe, 17 to 18. That's why it falls into this cycle here. Hazel Project is right around that time finishing up as well.
How did it take two years to get to the board?
For the time it gets submitted in 2017, there's a cutoff for the previous funding cycle, and this round, it comes around to the, so the board approved, there was a delay in approving last cycle, that's why. There's a little bit of delay in the funding approval earlier this year.
Well, I have a problem with that, taking two years to get here, I have to tell you. I think that's not very efficient. And then I didn't really understand the question. I guess it was more comments, if it's a 35 mile-an-hour speed limit, why do we need, why is there a request for speed bumps? But they come in because people are speeding and neighbors are complaining.
Why 20 miles an hour? Excuse me, sir. Sir, please, no outbursts.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have a follow-up question on that? He intimated that there was a construction, construction that was altering the traffic patterns during the time of deliberating this. So when did the construction end, and was the vote after everything, the dust had settled and traffic was back to normal?
The Hazel Project was completed roughly around 2017. So during that time, there was, you know, Hazel Project happened in the span of two to three years. So there were, at time, they had to reroute traffic. But during the outreach and this traffic data, this is after the Hazel Project.
So that there was no, there was no longer traffic that was being diverted into ...
Correct, correct, correct. It was, I would deem, we would deem that as normal traffic condition since then.
Thank you.
Ms. Sturch.
Excuse me. My name's Jana Sturch, and my family and I have lived on Illinois My name's Jana Sturch, and my family and I have lived on Illinois Avenue since 1970.
Could you speak up a little bit, please? It's kind of hard to hear you.
I'm a little nervous.
Oh, well, you know.
We don't bite. Hard.
We've lived there for 44 years, and our home directly faces Illinois Avenue. And it's a street with no sidewalks, no curbs and gutters, no bike trails. It's a very narrow street. And during the construction on Hazel, it was pretty bad, but that traffic pattern has continued during commute traffic. Now, people are used to using Illinois, and in the mornings, I can't pull out of my driveway or cross the street to go for a walk. And during the late commute time, it's the same way. So I just want to address that, that the traffic pattern is consistent still, even though Hazel's finished. So even not during commute traffic, we have people speeding by on motorcycles, cars. There is definite speeding issue. It used to be a street rarely used, but it's not that way anymore. And I think the speed tables should help and provide slower traffic and more safe time for people on bikes and on foot. And I'm hoping perhaps it will encourage people who still take the shortcut on Illinois to go to Hazel and on the three lanes that have been prepared for that kind of traffic. So I urge you to vote for the speed tables. I'd wish the three were still there. And my card was in the mail right away saying, yay, county! So I'm hoping that you will vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. One more time, Jeff Lanzaro, are you here? Okay. That's all the speaker slips I have.
I'd say I have an email from John and Adele Briggs urging a yes vote on the Illinois Avenue project.
Okay, since we have no more speakers, somebody's waving...
I would speak for Blue Oak Drive.
Well, if you want to speak, just fill out a speaker card and come down and speak. You did?
Yeah.
I apologize, we have about 100 cards up here today, so...
Anybody else planning to speak that didn't get the, that wasn't called?
My name is Paul Bonislawski, and I live on Blue Oak Drive, and I've been there since 1986. Blue Oak Drive's a fairly long road. It only has one stop sign. So it's essentially uncontrolled, and it's between Madison and Main, so it's a classic cut-through street. So there's traffic constantly, and it's moving fairly fast. And I live where the proposed speed table would be by Planting, and that's at the end of a pretty hot corner. And cars come around that thing, and it's, you hear the wheels squealing, and, you know, it's just, it's like crazy out there. In fact, this morning, I went out just to put my garbage in the garbage can. A car came from Main, it was probably doing about 50 miles an hour, and it had to hit that corner. It couldn't just, you know, go the normal route. It had to go into practically the sidewalk to cut around the corner. So that happens, you know, frequently. It's not unusual. And there was a firehouse on Main, but they closed it. And years ago, folks wanted to have that speed tables put in, but they were told they couldn't do that because fire trucks had to have access to go through on Blue Oak to go to Madison from Main. But the firehouse is now closed, there's no reason now not to have the speed tables put out there. It's badly needed. It's wild out there, it's crazy. So if you guys could get it together, definitely put those speed tables up. And that's all I really have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll bring it back to the Board.
I thought Don had something he wanted to say.
Yeah, I had a general question, just before we get into any specifics. This relates to one of the locations in District 5, number 39, actually the last one on the list. I'm supportive of that. I know the neighborhood's been advocating for this for some time. What I wanted to point out, though, to Lou and to Reza and others, is that this is an area that continues to develop, and one of the things that, as we go through mapping for new subdivisions, and we look at locations for schools and parks, and particularly here in this area, a particular area where Waterman Road is being extended through, but it's been, you know, it hasn't been opened up yet, so traffic has been diverted through the neighborhood. We get traffic patterns that may not be the ultimate ones with other roads being brought online. What I wanted to ask, though, is that as you're looking at these maps, I think there's been board direction, and I know that with the installation of some of these subdivisions, there were speed bumps put in at locations where you could anticipate that they were arterials connecting with either Florin Road or Gerber Road, Bradshaw. And I'm going to ask that we kind of re-up that effort, because when we allocate the amount of money that we spend to do this, because it's important to neighborhoods, and we go through the process that we've, I think, refined, and again, kudos to our staff for the good work they do on this Neighborhood Transportation Management Program. I just, I think it's really important, particularly the area that's developing very quickly, and, you know, some of this is adjacent to areas in Supervisor Kennedy's district, that we actually, you know, make sure that we give a good, solid look at where those... Because I know we got a request in now regarding one of the parks, I think there's another school going in. And with schools, it's a little different, because you kind of look at where those walk patterns are and so forth. But we ought to get some of these speed bumps and traffic diverters and roundabouts if necessary with stops. I know that's another concern, we have a roundabout that doesn't function as it should, and so now people want stop signs there. I'm going to ask us to make sure that as we look at those maps, somebody should be developer installed, that way you don't have to go through the process we go through here about who gets the speed bump, who doesn't, who wants it, who doesn't. It's there when that subdivision is built. It's a part of the landscape, and it functions as it should, obviously with good traffic management. So I guess I would just ask Lou that, I don't know who reviews that in your shop, and if that's Matt or somebody else, but we need to make sure that we nail some, because we don't see those maps. You know, once we rezone an area, a lot of times those maps, we see the final subdivision map, so we don't get a chance to comment on it. So we're leaving a lot to staff in that regard, and I know that you guys are diligent, but I would just ask that we, again, otherwise, we bear this expense and all the effort that goes into it, which is, you know, good investment. On the other hand, we might be able to avoid it in some of these newly developing areas and get ahead of it before people even move into those houses. So I don't know if there's any comment, Reza or Lou, you have.
DOT already reviews development plans, and we are very mindful of the traffic calming features that need to be included in the initial plans, because it's cheaper and more effective.
Right.
And it makes sense to do it right from the beginning, rather than going back and trying to retrofit that. But I will make sure that we are even more focused on that based on your comments.
Yeah, I just continue to vigilance, because again, in some of these areas, you couldn't have anticipated all of what happens with traffic patterns. But I just, again, going in earlier is better in a lot of cases, so... Okay, that's my comment I had. Thank you, Ms. Sturch.
Thank you. Any others? Ms. Peters?
Thank you. Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation. And Mr. Brady, I know you will, you're not happy with this, but one of the good things about speed bumps, I've found, is if they don't work, all it takes is, you know, a backhoe or a tractor, something like that, to go out and scoop them up if they continue to be a problem. So let's try this. I think staff also ought to probably take a look at the amount of traffic that's on it, even, we've had opinions on both ways. And then also, I'd like to know why it took two years to get here, but separately from this, so...
Second.
Question, a second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item.
The Chair's microphone is gone. Our microphones are gone.
Item 47 is the Highlands Market PCN ABC License Hearing to Determine Whether Public Convenience or Necessity Would Be Served by Issuance of a Type 20 Liquor License to the Highlands Market Located at 3667 Elkhorn Boulevard in the North Highlands Community.
Thank you. At this time, Chair's prerogative, I'm going to take a five-minute recess in order to, we actually have a larger crowd turnout than we had anticipated, and so to have the meeting run in a way that is fair, transparent, and efficient, I'd like to see if I could take a five-minute recess, talk to both parties, and see how we can organize this in a way that makes sense. So first, I'll speak over to my left, your right, with the applicant, and then if there is organized representation on behalf of the opposition, if there are leaders that are considered leaders of the opposition, if you will, I'd like to speak with you as well and agree on some ground rules. So with that, we'll take a five-minute recess, and if we can, if I can meet with the applicant over here, that'd be great.